Tom is going to go.
Yeah, I'm not so ready.
We're ready.
All right, all right. We won't talk about medicine anymore, dear honey. So, as I remember, we were going to talk about the senior services salary position at our last budget meeting last Wednesday, because that's the unresolved issue for the 23 budget. So I think that's our first priority day. And then you talked a lot some of other expanded issues. So I don't know if that's today's meeting or separate meeting, or how you wish to go forward with that. But I thought at least we should start with the senior services director position.
I agree. But I think if we can also maybe before the meeting's over, kind of hobnob in terms of what what parameters we want to see to look at the others and and what kind of data that I have that we can copy and share.
Yeah, okay. But as I was saying, let's focus on the senior service because we really need to get that.
We do.
Resolve. The other issues, I think, will be a longer dialogue discussion for more meetings. We're not going to get that.
There'll be more meetings.
Yes, but at least just try the senior services. So I'm glad we're agreeing with that. So actually, Darcy, April and I have been in dialogue how we can go forward. Because this is an issue that has been around for several years. We actually talked about, I think Melinda's probably the only one left, from when we restructured senior services back in 2012, about how to go forward. And we went a major restructuring. And let me just start with a background. As I pointed out yesterday, really, we probably should have had a discuss. And it's easier to look back and not blaming anybody. But from the eighties through 2002, the former Commission on Aging, which was called, had a budget of about $200,000 total. It was a completely different structure. It was mostly social activities, some services. But prior to the nineties, it actually was a separate, truly a commission on aging, with a separate board. They were formed in the late seventies. They had a part-time director and a part-time staff through 1984. In 1984, the Commission on Aging Board decided they wanted a full-time staff person. At that time, they received their money from the county, but were an independent board and were housed in Lake Leone. They weren't even housed at the courthouse. In 1984, they agreed to hire a full-time director as the first full-time director. And that was done by the Commission on Aging. And they hired a 22-year-old recent college graduate named Jane Janet. If you know that, but she was the full-time director of Commission on Aging. Yes, see? And so she did that until her daughter was born in 87. That time, the Commission on Aging was going to do a full search. On interim basis, they named a secretary named Rosie Stephens as the interim until they did the search. Well, there's a lot of changes, I guess, on the Commission on Aging Board. At that time, the Board of Commissioners started questioning the whole structure. And so they never did a search, and Rosie just kind of stayed on as the director and evolved, stayed that way until the nineties. In the nineties, the county board, I looked at some minutes, 10 years ago, and had controversy. I think the background's really important. We're concerned that the county was funding it, but it was not, the county board did not have control over it. It was a separate board. They gave allocations. Most of their budget came from the county board. There were some federal grants involved, state grants. But it was an independent commission on aging and did not report to the Board of Commissioners. In the late nineties, the Board of Commissioners decided to make it a department. And so it became a department, just like every other department on the county government. They kept a commission on aging board as ex-official members. And that caused controversy until 2012, because there was that battle. Who runs the Commission on Aging? Is it the Commission on Aging Board? Is it the Board of Commissioners? In 2002, there was a decision made to go for a milledge. And that milledge passed, and it has every year, it was a six-year milledge. And that changed dramatically the funding. It went from about $200,000 to almost a million dollars overnight. And there really was not a plan in place how to implement it. And so the staff struggled. And there was some friction between the Commission on Aging Board, the county board, and the staff was concerned they had too much money, which they actually did have. When I came in 2012, their surplus was larger than their entire budget. And they were doing mostly social trips, a lot of activities, a lot of trips. They were giving vouchers. There was no standards. They were doing snow plowing, but they were doing dock removal, everything else. And I think it kind of came to head for two reasons. One was we discovered accidentally by one of the senior services, with an aging staff, the director and the, they had a full-time person that does their budgets. Were gone. The other staff person was going through the time cards and said there must have been error made because the travel amounts did not add up. The mileage did not add up. And so she called some housekeepers. At that time, they were county employees. And said, I think you made a mistake on your time cards and your travel reimbursement, because you have more mileage than you can do. Your time cards and the mileage do not add up in terms of days of work. Long story, I'm giving you a mini version here. Long story short, they were doubling and tripping the mileage at the advice of the director and the second person in charge as a way to get more money to the housekeepers. And they all were doing it. I think there were 12 housekeepers.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. And Melinda remembers this. We discovered all of them at the advice of the director. So if I'm a housekeeper and I do a job Tuesday, I live in Cedar. I go to a house in Maple City, and then I do a house in Empire, and I do a house in Bon Harbor. They were told to put mileage up from Cedar to Maple City and back Cedar, and then from Cedar to Bon Harbor and back home, and then from Empire to Cedar and back. So they were padding the mileage. And they were told if they only did one job a day, they could double their mileage. And all of them were told this was, so that became a big controversy. We got the IRS involved. We got legal counsel involved. There was great disparity on who authorized this. The director and the number-two person said it was the county administrator. The county administrator said he didn't know, the former administrator, said he never did this since his internal decision. At the same time, the county board read in the Lilo enterprise that the Commission on Aging gave another $50,000 to Meals on Wheels. And the commissioner said, we never authorized $50,000 more for Meals on Wheels, but the Commission on Aging Board said they did it. So those two things collided at one point in 2012. We did an investigation. We had to redo all the W2s for three years for all those housekeepers. The director and their number-two person both resigned, which was probably a good move on their part. We brought in a consultant. At that time, we also looked at the budget and found out that they had their own set of books. The county was doing official books, but they had their own set of books and keeping track of expenses and so forth. And then the Commission on Aging Board thought they were in charge. And they, it just was a mess. So we brought in a consultant. We restructured. We brought in Gray Pielkowski, who was ahead at that time of the area agency on aging, just retired. We got through the bottom. We completely eliminated the Commission on Aging Board. They really didn't have any authority. And truly, it was a department. We said we should treat them the same as every other department. So we eliminated that. We restructured the budget. And one time, we actually cut the milledge rate because the surplus was so great. It was greater, their annual surplus was 1.5 times what their annual budget was, because they just weren't spending money, because there really was no plan in place. So it was a challenging time. We restructured, brought in a new director, posted a job, had, I don't know, 15, 20 applicants and people selected that time.
There were 43.
Forty-three, oh, okay. I think we had, okay, in the final list, I think we narrowed it down to 15 or so. I remember we had 15, 20.
You tell me that all the time. There were 43.
Forty-three, okay. That must have been, yeah, including the C-list.
Yes.
So, yes, thank you for that. But April was brought in. We had a lot of discussions with the board and completely restructured the services, put some means testing in place, went to more of a as-needed basis in terms of more of social activities. So it's a long story, but a point I guess I'm making is when the budget switched from $200,000 to almost a million, and we did the restructuring, the salary was never looked at. So the pay scale for the senior services director is the same as it's been since the nineties, when it was a small department with a small budget. You know, it's easy to look back, but really, when the budget was passed, when the milledge was passed in 2002, it should have been probably reviewed, especially when we did the whole restructuring in 2012, it should have been reviewed. Unfortunately, that never happened. And so here we are. There was an adjustment last year, made about $3,000, I think, because we found out. Once again, this pay scale was done in the nineties by a former administrator. As I understand the board and clerk's office was not involved, but we found out that in the past, in the former pay scale, the senior services director and the maintenance director were almost at the same level. The senior service director was a couple of, if you look at the starting wage, was a couple of hundred dollars above the maintenance director. But the scale, the senior services director position was increased 3% a year. The maintenance director position was increased 5% a year. So you start off almost the same, but four years later, the senior service director was making less than the maintenance director. So we restructured it last year, and they adjusted about $3,000 where it's comparable now. But we never looked at the pay scale. So we look at how we can make that fair. And let me just tell you what Darcy and I and April talked about this morning. If you look at this pay scale here, which is a non-union pay scale, remember that? And once again, let's take the people out and qualifications out. If you look at it, the senior service director's starting pay is 56, 036. Want to see that? If you look at the chief deputies' positions, it is actually lower than the chief, the chief deputy treasurer is at 58.6, the chief deputy registrar is at 58.6. Chief deputy clerk is at 70. So we have one department head that is making less money than the chief deputies', which I think is an issue. And also, if you look around, and I start thinking about this, if you look, if you went department by department, let's say 12 years ago, so before I got here or before April got here, if you compare their duties in 2010 to 2022, if you look, they're pretty much the same as they were. Construction codes, we change your names, but their functions are the same. Clerk's office, registrar of deeds, equalization, MSU, they pretty much do the same functions they do. Senior Services is the only department, I think, has a completely different mission role and focus immediately than 2010. So a lot of things have changed, and we were never proactive in looking at this. But we have a situation now where a chief deputy is making more money than one of our department heads, which is an issue. So how do we go forward? Remember how you do it? No one's going to agree to everything, because it's so subjective when you look at salaries.
Such a, you said the chief deputy is making more than...
Yeah, if you look at the chief deputy treasurer and chief deputy registrar of deeds, their wage is $58,000.
Yes.
642. Starting pay for the senior services director is $56,036.
Okay, you're just looking at starting.
Yeah, we're just looking at, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's assistant director.
If there's a vacancy right now.
Okay.
Assistant Director 911 also makes more.
Yes. So we're thinking, how can we?
Sure.
How can we go forward and recommend? Because you get 10 people and you get 10 different views and different opinions on how to go forward. So April and I and Darcy are trying to meet this. Look at this, take all the emotions out of it, look at the background. What can we recommend to the board? Because if we're going to make changes, we want to do it in the 23 budget year, which the board is going to approve in December. So that's why I'm saying this is our focus today, that's the issue. So what the three of us are recommending is we adjust the senior services director pay to the same pay scale as the human resource director, which is 64, 618. That puts that position above the chief deputy positions. And it puts it comparable to the human resource director position. And I think recognizes that it's a different program than it was 10, 13, 20 years ago. So to get the dialogue started, Darcy, I, April recommend that we put it at the same pay scale as the human resource director, which is a range of 64, 6 to 71, 6.
Just a question. Since the human resources director doesn't supervise anybody, has a budget that, has a budget that comes from the county totally, so they're not responsible for raising her own funds or for overseeing a budget that's about a million dollars, and she doesn't oversee that, she doesn't have the year's experience in that grade, why aren't we putting her position equal with the planning director?
Well, you can argue that. If you look at that logic, how much people supervising their budget, then our equalization director should be our lowest paid one, even if she has no budget. And technically, we supervise a couple of people, they have separate duties. I mean, you could argue back and forth. I'm saying this is what the three of us agree on.
Are you comfortable with this, April?
I'm fine. I'd be fine. I, I'm, I think it's important that we elevate the wage scale position, so as that it reflects the responsibilities that this position has.
Here's the reality, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you, do you feel that it does that? I mean, in terms of what, because it's not what you were recommending in here.
No, it was not what I initially recommended.
And, and I just was, let me just ask a couple of the questions. So, so the fact that you're comfortable, even though you have more supervisory responsibility, you have more budget, you have all of the other responsibilities, you have more, more in your program than HR is going to have, you are comfortable with starting at lower, at the lower amount?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. The thing that bothers me about this is it's a social services position. In fact, frankly, you know, I'm wondering why we don't want to downgrade department directors because they're working in a social area as opposed to like planning or equalization or something that is more based on more objective parameters? So, but if April's comfortable with this, although I still think it would be better to raise it to the other, my personal.
Yeah, you know, and that's a challenge. Anytime you look at salaries, the minute we're going out there having this meeting, I've had four people come to me wanting their positions. And that's nothing to do with the eight that, I don't know, the eight you're talking about, union. It's a known situation. No matter how you do it, you're not going to get people satisfied. If you do want those abdominal, that walk on this person that does not this. If you look at the scales, and Darcy did a review of various counties, it's, it's all over the board. And it really was hard to compare, because our program is completely different than Antrim versus Grand Travers versus Denzy. When you look at construction codes, it's pretty easy to compare apples to apples when you look at other departments. When you look at senior services, every county has their own unique way of doing it. Some are more social, some are more client-driven, some provide direct services, some contract it out. So it's really difficult. But in your package, you do have the other senior services or commission aging salaries. And you look, they do go all, all over the board, from $46,000 to a high of, it's like $70,000. You look at Grand Travers County, theirs is 61.
No, I, I know. And I, I think if we pick up, you know, fall back on your advice, which I think is sound, that we take emotions out of it, everybody is going to be, no matter what we do, they're going to be unconcerned. So maybe we don't pay attention to that motion, that particular emotion and do what is equitable.
Well, at the end, it's up to the board to decide, yeah. This is what we think will be non-controversial. It addresses the needs partially. April said she's fine with it. But also, the other flip side is, once again, if you look at market-driven, if we write down, we posted a job for equalization director, planning director, the senior services director. The odds are, we would not get anybody that's qualified for equalization director. And that's why their pay is so high. Antrim County went three years to no applicants. So if you look strictly at the budget, staff personnel, Andrew has one of the smallest staff and probably the smallest budget in the county, yet he's one of the highest-paid directors.
Right.
It's market-driven. When we look at planning, we'd probably get a few people, but you'd have to have state certificates, you have to have others doing the responsibility. We'd be very limited. When we posted the senior service position, I was going to say 15, 20, we had, last time, 46 applicants.
But how many years ago was that?
10, 10 years ago. But I'm sure we'd get a lot of, I know when Grand Travers County posted theirs, two, three years ago, I think I read in the paper they had 30 applicants for that job. We posted jobs the last few years here, and some of them, we kept zero applicants. So, you know, part of it is market-driven.
Well, but doesn't the senior services job require a master's in social work? And that's what April asked.
Yeah, remember, those are jobs, those are guidelines. There's no state mandate requirements. There is for planning, there is for equalization. I'm not, I'm just giving you the other side of it.
No, no, and I'm trying to give you the other side.
Yeah, oh, no. I'd say April's worth every penny. She's done a great job. I would say we have one of the best senior services departments in the state.
Well, she definitely elevated the whole image, you know, from where it was, what she picked up on.
What the image was, if you look at the problems we had in 2012, and even before that, and Melinda remembers all the controversy we had, long before I was here with senior, with Commission on Aging, since April was involved, we haven't had any of that.
No.
We streamlined, we made some tough choices in terms of restructuring. We got rid of vouchers and more of the social things and strictly are driven. We're the only one, a few counties, maybe the only one, that does not have a waiting list for Meals on Wheels. We provide services. I don't think we have any waiting lists for any programs. And it was difficult to get there.
Well, yeah.
Not all seniors agreed with all the changes that we made.
Absolutely.
I would say we, I would put our program against any program in the state of Michigan.
That's not, that's not the question, you know, and you, you're absolutely right, and I agree with you. And you did leave out, I think it was a $14,000 IRS fine back in the day that we...
Yeah, I can't remember, but we did have to pay.
Think we got that forgiven?
I really felt...
Yeah, we had to pay.
Somehow.
I really felt sorry for those housekeepers, because they're the ones that have to...
It was a mess. It was a mess. So there's no question. It's really, and as you see, we've got to take the emotions out of it, take the personalities out of it, and just look at our job descriptions. So I obviously do have some of the same concerns, that if we raise up one, even some, then we're going to have others, it is going to be that domino effect. We are going to have others come in, and, and I can, I can just see it already, because
Actually, that happened last year when you did the one for the attorney upstairs.
Absolutely, just like I said it would, right?
And then, yeah, and then when we made the changes, what we had to do for the chief deputies had caused a lot of internal, let's say, strife.
So, you know, so if you're saying raise that up, it would raise it up right on, the same, right on down the board. So second year would go to, to 60?
It'd be comparable, yes.
All right. And then, so it would raise it up to 71, 6 right away? Is that what you're talking about doing?
Yeah, it'd be the same pay scale as the human service.
Or, or first of the year, it would be $70,000. You know, it would be set...
It'd be the same pay scale plus 3.25% if that's what's in the 23 budget.
Okay, hold on a second, because I'm looking at a proposal, and I don't understand how this got to there. I've got two charts in front of me, so, okay, $70,000, and it would go, that's at 57. And you're saying it would be the same as, we're looking at the human resource?
Yeah, if you look at this 22 non-union wage scale, it has...
So it jumped to 73.9, so basically $74,000.
Correct. You're gonna, you're gonna go from 71, 605 on 12, 31. On 1, 1 of 23, the rate will be $73,933.
Mm-hmm. That's what I see.
Yeah, it's whatever it is, plus 3.25%.
Mm-hmm. That's a big jump.
So my question is, what does the planning director make today?
It's, she currently is at 77, 065.
Yes, okay. So, so here's, here's what's bothering me. This has been going on a long time. For how long have you been here, April? Since 2012?
On December 6th, it'll be 10 years.
10 years. So for 10 years, the pay has been really inequitable. So we're talking about raising it to 64, which is a starting position, the same starting position as someone who just took the human resources director for someone who's been here 10 years. And the situation has gone on for 10 years. So, and our planning director is already going to be up at, what was it, 70 today, what she's making?
77, 065.
77, 0, there it is, 77, 065. So at least, I think, we ought to start at, at at least the 69, at that rate, raise it up. I just...
But Patricia, what you're trying to do, though, what you're saying is you're looking at, you're not looking at this position. So if you look at, if you look at these wage scales, and you don't know who's going to sit in them, you don't know who these people are. That's the way you have to look at them. So you have to look at, what do you want, what do we in Lilo County want to pay our senior services director? But what you're saying is, well, she's been here 10 years. And the same type thing we did upstairs, while he's doing the majority of the work. So instead of restructuring or looking at the position and, and only the position, we started doing these shotgun things. So, you know, the same argument can be made, we could say, well, how many years has our human resource director been here in the county? 15? Maybe not in that position.
Not in that position.
All right, but still, I mean, it's, it's, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you can't look at these like apples to apples, and to be equitable, then we're going to start saying, well, look at, boy, you know, look at our planning director. So this person is, is going to, to only be a few thousand away from what our, our planning director is, is making. And, you know, look at what that workload is, or that supervisory load is, or the, you know, the different programs.
Commissioner Lotner, I hear what you're saying. And I think, you know, the purpose of this meeting was to deal with an inequity. So that's, we're not...
Or a perceived inequity.
We're not, we're not, no, it isn't a perceived inequity. It isn't an equity.
It is, or perceived.
But, but we're not dealing with, starting, creating a new position and saying, where are we going to put it? This is a position that's been in existence for 10 years. 10 years. And I think what we're trying to deal with is, is to make sure that if that position is set, not at a starting rate, but at what it, it should be if we went out to hire somebody else.
Okay, let me just clarify, because I think this is just, I'm not sure we're on the same page. If you look at what we're proposing, the senior service position would range from starting pay of 64, 618 to four years, 71, 605, right? If there was a brand-new person in that position, they would fall somewhere in the starting rate and four-year. If the current senior service, if this is approved, the senior services director with her tenure status would be at 71, 605.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to clarify, because I didn't think that.
You could see where I was going.
So we're giving, now, the human resource is a brand-new position, so that person started at the beginning of the pay scale.
But you're talking about adjusting the pay scale to 71.
We're talking about adjusting the pay scale. The person in the position has been here more than four years.
Yes, so, okay, that makes sense. So it'd be 71.
But if that person left, and we hire a new person, depending on their qualifications or skills...
They could be in that range.
They could be anywhere from the start to the four-year. And I did think we're on the same page there, so...
No, you were exactly correct. Thank you. I thought we were shifting her up to that, the 64. I just couldn't make that make sense.
No, 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 that would not, would that not be? We're talking about, once again, we're not talking about April, we're talking about the position.
We're talking about the position, as it is.
So someone with four years' experience here at the senior services director position would be at 71, 605.
Now I can see why April's fine with it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I would not agree with that logic, because we're going to put her at the beginning.
Thank you.
That actually would be a reduction.
Yeah.
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. So, thank you.
No matter how we do it, you're never going to get people, no matter, and that's why, as you remember, a couple of years ago, we looked at pay scales, I think you were part of that, Patricia. We looked at the clerk, we looked at the prosecutor, and we looked at, I think, senior services, so that time. senior services, so that time, and we could not come with agreement. Our prosecutor's one of the lowest paid, I mean, that's a different topic, but remember how you do it, it's an emotional decision, and everyone's valuable, and everyone does a great job, but it's hard to compare them, there truly are different duties and responsibilities across the board. And like I said, if you use strictly on staffing and budget, then Andrew should be our lowest-paid department.
Okay, so register of deeds would be seventy-seven. Register of deeds right now is where?
She's not, she's not at the top.
She's at seventy-two, she's new, she's seventy-two. Okay, and finance, planning, equalization, building official.
So.
Building official is Jerry.
Look, look at.
Our logic for that is, if we did this, as we proposed, it would be, right now, that position is below the chief deputy treasurer, below the chief deputy register deeds, below the chief deputy clerk, and below the nine-one-one assistant director. Our recommendation puts them above those positions.
But it would still be below the building official, which is Jerry?
But if we go.
Amber.
If we go to this, and I don't know, we're not, we don't have comparable, I guess, I guess these comparables, we have to use our comparable probably to our 2022s, but if we jumped this position up to seventy-one, six, we're going to be one of the highest-paid senior services departments around.
I'm also the most tenured person of all those directors, the next in line would be the Benzie County, and they are currently making.
Okay, wait, wait, these are starting salaries here on this chart.
The senior services comparables are starting.
These are just starting salaries.
So starting salary starts at seventy-two, twelve.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So I think that's important, because, yeah, I mean, we don't know how many years, because April's been here.
But even Grand Travis County only starts at sixty-one thousand.
It ends at seventy-seven.
Right.
Because they have a six-year step.
Right.
So if you drop off the two steps prior, you get to our four steps.
Mm-hmm.
So once again, it's very complicated.
So we don't, yeah, so we really wouldn't have to, we could pick any, any number in between here, even in between, you know, if you look, pick a, pick a whole new number, doesn't, we don't have to jump to where the human resources director is.
It's up to the seven boards of commissioners.
Yes, yes, so you could do, you know, you could do, you know, fifty-seven thousand dollar start, or, you know, and go up from there.
Well, I'm saying this is what the three of us.
This is easy, I mean, you can pick a number that's already there, and that's just easy, but we don't have to do that. And I guess I don't, what's, you know, yeah, April, you've been here ten years, and I remember when you came here, and, and we're, we're absolutely delighted with what the start was at that time, so I guess I'm wondering, you know, your salary right now is, is a good salary for Leland County, it's a good package for Leland County, so what aren't you happy with?
There's the inequity, my position starts lower than what a chief deputy, so as a director that's in charge of a large budget and overseeing people, this position starts less than what a, a chief deputy position starts at, that's an inequity.
I, you know, I guess, and I guess that's an argument, because if you say like a chief deputy, there is already an inherent level of responsibility, because when you come to an elected position, if that person gets elected to that position and never shows up, that chief deputy is the one, that's, that's a given, there.
I am the one for the senior services, I'm responsible for the budget, I'm responsible for supervising, I'm responsible for doing, I, the restructuring of the whole department, so that it.
Of a non-mandated, it's not mandated, correct?
It's not mandated.
It's non-mandated, though.
We're not, the laws were set up in late seventies to allow.
To allow them.
Counties to create commissioning.
It was, they were created in response to the older Americans Act that was passed in nineteen seventy.
Right, but not mandated, so we're, you know, a, a chief deputy position is a mandated position.
Correct.
So there is that difference, so we're offering the service. I just think it's a good package, I don't, I guess I really don't understand the, the need to change where we are, because once again, I, you know, we're happy with how the, the department's being run, we're happy with you as a director, and, and once again, I, I think there would be a lot of people interested in this position, as, as most of these, in, in the case of a, of an opening, I doubt if we would have a hard time filling these positions, I think these are great salaries, all of them.
I think in today's world, with the shortage of social workers and that background, it would be very hard to find someone to fill that, at that starting rate.
Boy, I agree with that wholeheartedly, like, medical areas just.
I disagree, because I think we're, how many, how many opportunities are there for someone in this field in the state of Michigan?
Right now, they can't find enough people to fill the positions.
So we have empty, empty senior services director positions.
You don't, you have problems in, with social workers.
What county doesn't have a senior services director?
I don't know.
How many are there in state of Michigan?
And I don't know how long they've been there.
Eighty-three?
I don't know, but I, I don't think that's really relevant, I think what we're doing.
Oh, well, I do think it's relevant.
I think what you're looking at is, is two factors, one, this would be a very hard position to recruit, because April is exactly correct, there are lots of unfilled positions out there right now, because the medical staff and social work falls in that category, you know, look at what the problems we're having in just finding practitioners for children and for adults in this county, we, we, we can't, we are having a hard time attracting.
Those are different sets of talents, though.
But, no, but, but, my point is, it's always bothered me, and it still does, that our, our, our department directors aren't the same, you know, building official, she has a lot of responsibilities, so does the senior services, senior services also oversees all those contracts, to provide all those services, not just the staff that she's with, and it's a similar thing with building official, they do the same thing, so it just, it, it still doesn't make sense to me why we wouldn't put it all at the same level, planning director too, whatever it is, but, you know, this is an improvement, but it's not probably where it should be, so I can support it because it's an improvement, as long as we're putting, April at the, we're putting the senior services position, as it is now, with someone in it for ten years, at the, the top of the, the fourth year starting rate.
Well, to summarize where I think we're at, at our budget meeting last week, a long week, seems a lot longer than last week, but it looks like a perfect week. Our chairman asked us to come together as a group, try to make a recommendation for the summer meeting, because this truly is the only unresolved issue in our twenty, twenty-three budget, so he asked all of us specifically to come, he asked us internally to come up with a recommendation to this committee, so Verci, April and I tried to do the best we could to come up, take the emotions out of it, come up with a plan that is logical, and how you do, the definition of logical varies with each department, I think, and what should be fair compensation, and that goes back to a bigger picture, but we tried to come up with a plan, it may not be perfect, but all three of us feel comfortable with making this recommendation to this group. We have two commissioners out here, you can agree or disagree or split on this, and we can make the recommendation to the board at the December sixth meeting.
I'll support it.
So, you two can just say, we have a discussion, at the December sixth meeting, we can give the, our recommendation, our internal staff recommendation, you can, both of you can raise your viewpoints, whether you support it or not, sounds like we're split here, and ultimately, as you know, the final decision is with the board's decision.
I think that's the appropriate way to go.
So is it fair to say that there's not agreement from the two commissioners on our proposal?
Well, no. I don't, I don't agree with that, no.
I would say, I would say it a little differently, I'd perhaps say that there is a, one commissioner is in agreement with the proposal.
Yeah, I'm, there's two different, yeah. So we'll put this on the December sixth agenda.
Sounds good.
We'll give an update, and then we'll let the full board make a decision. Correct?
Sounds good.
Good, that's the major, that was, I think, the main focus of this morning's meeting.
Yes.
So let's go beyond that, I think you have some other issues.
I do, I do, and, and it's just in terms of looking at equity and fairness across the board, and dealing with issues that, avoiding additional conflict among the ranks. We can't, so, so I propose, we won't pick another date, but basically, let me pull out some of the data that I think you're going to want to see, and highlight, you know, with just a short email, what it is that is creating the, the unhappiness, and also the inequity, and see if we can't decide how to look at that. What I had asked for gives years of service, it gives steps, it gives current salary, it fails, it gives all of that kind of relevant information, it may not have additional information that you want, but I don't think we can come up with what that might be until you see what we have as a starting point.
What are you talking, who are you talking about? Who are you, who are you?
I'd rather not name names, but I'm talking about eighteen Teamsters members, and then just looking at where we are.
Just be careful, we start about union, we could have different dialogues, whether it's a union position or a non-union position, so just, before you go, and, so, we have to be careful, we have six labor contracts here, if we're talking about any issues related to labor contracts, we have to go through the union committee.
Union has to bring those to us, we don't bring those to this board.
It can go either way, but we have to be careful, we cannot discuss union-related issues, whether it's salary or terms of the contract without the union being present, or with other employees, that would be a violation, and that's an unfilled labor contract, so we'd be very careful, so if you wish to talk about union positions, well, let's start with non-union positions, that's easier, that's something we as a group, as a board, can discuss, look at, without any issues, that's strictly a decision of the board of commissioners on the non-union pay scale, so that's a separate process, we're going to talk about union positions, and we have six contracts, and everyone but the department heads and the chief deputy is a part of union, we need to have a dialogue with the union committee, and ask them if they want to participate, if they want to send a deputy or something. We cannot be talking about union employees without the union being part of that dialogue.
No, I, I think that's a good idea.
I just want to put it on the record, because, I know you know that, but.
No, actually, you've been helpful, I didn't know all of the details, but I think it's very important that the union representative be involved.
Yes, and so.
I just say it's a call from our union representative, we shouldn't be coming from any of us, we shouldn't be bringing union, union situations to this table.
Well, either party can, but they have to go through a process, and it has to be a joint agreement.
Once the process is done, yes.
Nor can we mandate, it has to be a joint discussion.
It's just a review, I don't think it's anything that's going to be detrimental.
But we can't say, let's just pick a dispatcher position, and we want to look at that salary, we cannot do that without consultation and joint, or joint agreement with the union on that. So, when it comes, let me further explain, when it comes to non-union position, we have a process where the board sets the criteria, the board sets the number of employees and the staffing levels for those positions, whether it's elected or not elected, it doesn't matter. How those positions are filled, and what level, that's a decision, if it's an elected official, it's up to that elected official, if it's a non-elected position, it's a department, it's up to the department head and the county administrator to pick that level, the board does not get involved where they place people on the pay scale, they set the range, it also legally depends on when that big seat comes up, so let's just say, oh, let's pick, let's pick construction codes, we all have senior inspectors there, who are off the top of the pay scale, so let's say one of them retired, so then, because that person at the top of pay scale, that's with the budget approved by the board, the director of that, Amber, and I have the authority to put them anywhere on the pay scale that we choose. If, however, someone that's in year one quit, and that was part of the board's budget, let's say we had a brand-new, let's say we had a new inspector position, and we started someone at year one, and at some point during the year, that person quit, Amber and I could only put that person at step one, unless it went back to the board and the board changed that, because that was the approved budget for that year, but if someone quit at an elected official's department, or a, or a department head that was at the top of the pay scale, then that department head and the administrator have the right to put them anywhere on those pay scales, so that's non-union.
So, with the union negotiations, those union negotiations have now, they're concluding, as of next month?
Only for, well, five of the six unions have contracts through 2024. The only contract that we are negotiating about there is the deputies, because they actually, everyone had a two-year contract, they had a three-year contract, so the other contracts expired in 2021, so last year, we, we get four, five contracts through 2024, those are done.
So those contracts are done through 2024?
Yes.
Okay.
The only one that's now is the deputies, they had a three-year contract that expires December thirty-first of this year. So that's the one we're negotiating for.
And that should be wrapped up next week.
Well, we, we hope, we can, we, I'm optimistic, we have a meeting tomorrow that Melinda's will be a part of, we cannot discuss the terms of that.
Sure, sure.
But I'm optimistic that it will be resolved prior to that this year, that's, that's my goal. When we place an elected officials, it's the same process, if they have a vacancy on a position that's, let's just say, one of the clerk's office people left, let's say, Gwen Drevetsky left, she's at the top of the pay scale, Michelle would have the right then to put that person anywhere on the pay scale here, she chooses, because that position is in the budget at the full salary amount, but if she had a second-year employee that resigned after through the year, she'd have the right to put them on the starting, the starting pay scale or the second step, if she wanted to go beyond that, she'd have to go to the board to adjust that.
So basically, the non-union folks are all the administrative folks.
It's the department heads, and, basically, the department heads and the second in command.
And, and basically, we've dealt with that primarily.
Well, it depends on who you talk to.
Or we just opened another whole can of worms.
Whoever agrees with that, they will not agree with that.
No, no, so we, we've dealt with some of it, anyway, we'll put it that way. So then the, the rest of the employees in this building are all Teamsters?
Uh, the majority of them, yes.
Yeah, the, the other unions relate to the sheriffs, to the nine-one-one.
The secretaries in the law enforcement are Teamsters.
Part of the, okay, but, and, and in this building, everyone else is.
That are, that isn't a union.
It isn't a union.
And then employees have the right where they choose to be, and the positions are in the union.
Yes.
Whether employees choose to be in here or not, that's between the employee and the union, we do not get involved in that.
Right, but the, but the pay scale and the steps are all negotiated and part of the union, whether that person chooses to join the union or not.
It's up to that individual. They have the same pay scale, same benefits, same terms, and that, because Michigan is a regular state.
So I, I think it's just important to understand with the, the union that affects our employees in this building, and the three secretaries, you know, where the inequity is, I think understanding is important, and to carry something back is very important, and to have a union rep there, I think is excellent, yeah, because maybe they can shine some light on why do we have this? Why aren't, why aren't you, why aren't you addressing it?
What are we trying to address?
What we're addressing, what we're addressing is, you know, when the two folk, two, two women in, when the two positions in the finance department were created, they were started at a much higher first step, well, they weren't the first step, they were started at a much higher level, but other positions that were created, that's during 2021, were created at lower levels.
But that's a decision of the.
And as I understand it, a lot of the department heads didn't. And as I understand it, a lot of the department heads didn't understand-
Did the union object?
No, I was just, just saying that, let's, every time we hired someone, the department head and I sit down, look at the pay scale and place people. The department heads know where they're placing them.
Let's, let's take what happened out. Okay, let's talk with what is the effect of it. The effect of it is that you have certain positions that do the same thing or sometimes more that are making far less money than these two new positions that were just created. And so it's created for eight people, a real inequity in the pay scales, particularly when it was converted to the new one.
I would say we follow the terms and conditions of the labor contract and the union agreed to that.
So now you're saying, I think, I think I heard at yesterday's meeting that we shouldn't be worried about the two positions that are just going into that because they, there would be a chance to adjust the inequities.
Yes.
But now I think you're saying we just leave that up to the unions?
No, 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 no. I'm saying if you want to look at, we're talking about two different issues. When you look at placing people on the pay scale position, that's a decision made by the department head and the administrator to fall within the line of the budget and the labor contract. So we have followed that. So these two positions are now in the union contract. Now, if you look at salary of different positions and where they're classified, we have, what, five, five grades now? Yes, we used to have eight grades. We reduced that, combined it. Our pay scale was extremely low. We actually combined. And the union was very grateful, actually, because that was our proposal, not theirs. Our last labor negotiation with the Teamsters, we actually went beyond what they were requesting. We just thought it was a fair thing to do. So we compressed that. I can tell you that caused problems because, first of all, no one got a pay cut. But some people who were at the old level two, we put a new level two, got 11% increase last year. Other people got 3.25. So once again, how fair is that? We had a couple of people complaining. No one took a pay cut. Everyone got 3.5. We had some people who were at the bottom of the grades who were put at the next level up who got 11% last year increase.
I, I, I'm just-
If you look at the whole thing, I, I don't know how you-
Well, I think having a union rep would be really important, kind of the question is, I, I find it really hard that a union rep would go along with, without making another recommendation to bring equity when, when that situation developed.
Well, by simple law, that's a management decision. It's not a human decision where people are placed on-
Oh, I know, but, but, but-
Now, if you want to increase someone, I'm sure the union's going to be in favor of that. I, I, why would they not be in favor of that? But if you increase, let's say, I'll give you a prime example. When we combined the salaries, the accounting clerks, the former ones, were here from above. I think they were at level, one was at level three, one was at level two. Those were combined to be at the new level three, I think.
Two.
Level two, okay. They think that was fair because one was making more money than the other one. No one took a pay cut. But the one at the lower level, when the whole level was eliminated, got bumped up to the newer level and got an 11% pay increase. So the former one who got 3.25 was not happy. That's just one example. I don't know how you deal with and create equity. Unless we have one pay scale and pay every Teamster exactly the same.
So, okay, so what is the process? For instance, and let's pick on the two positions in senior services that are doing basically the same thing but set at a different pay level. So what is the process to adjust that?
If you want to adjust any of the union positions, we'd have to have a meeting with the union reps and have a mutual agreement and then do an L O U and take that to the board and to the union.
Okay.
For any, well, any issue in the contract, no matter what it is, pay or-
But that's, that's, that's what you were referring to when you said they could all be adjusted?
Yes.
So it's a one-by-one issue? Okay.
Well, one-by-one or however you want.
So these are-
But usually, those things are done during the negotiation.
Why did they hire in? Because they weren't happy with what they would be making? They just hired in. They, they're bringing-
They were not union when they were hired in. There's a change.
Even still, they took the positions-
But as you saw my doctor and-
At those rates.
With April's proposal, and she had a tough time. These are new positions trying to, they were not proposed at the same pay scale.
And yet, yet people wanted those positions. They took those positions.
But if you remember what was approved by the board in July of '21, which had the pay scales, and then those were not at the equal pay scales. One was higher than the other one by a dollar or fifteen dollars.
I do have a question too, just for clarification. So this committee was charged, I apologize for not knowing. This committee was charged to do, or this group was charged to do what?
I believe originally it was the senior services director position, because that's the immediate-
That's really what we're looking at today. I just, I just wanted some clarity so I understood.
The only thing that's not resolved in 23 budget is the senior services director position. We'll put it on the budget or on the agenda for December 6th. We'll make our internal recommendation, and the board can say yes or no, or they can buy or not.
But the other thing we were, that supposed, that our chair, when I brought up the other issues, said, well, we can look at all of that, and Patricia, would you be involved with that? And that's how the other piece came to be.
And that's a much bigger challenge.
It's a bigger challenge because we're not doing, we're not doing a wage study.
We'll talk about that because, once again, that has surfaced internally and with some commissioners.
Well, it's been on the board discussed too.
Off and over.
And the board charged you with finding out whether or not there were individual, individual companies that might be available to do that. You came back and, and said, you and, and Darcy came back and said, no, that there wasn't anyone who could do it right away.
No, 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 no. We had two proposals.
Oh, that's right.
Could have started right away. The other company had to wait till March.
That's right. The decision-
But the board chose not to accept either of those proposals.
No, the finance, and the finance committee decided because there was budget and there was hiring of a new administrator, that they weren't supporting going ahead with a classification study this year.
They went to the board.
Oh, there's lots of reasons, but yeah. I don't, so-
We were charged with getting two, to get two proposals. We contacted companies. Most declined it. We had three that were interested. At the end, only two chose to submit proposals for them. Could not do it until March. There was one could have started this, this winter, this fall. And the cost was twenty, how did I see, twenty?
Twenty-three, twenty-five pounds.
Yeah, and the board declined.
And the likelihood is, we'd be just putting it on the shelf because all we would be doing is creating a whole lot of problems in this building if we went and tried to-
Did we, did we, I'm trying to remember how that went down.
Yep, the wage study was just for non-union, so it wouldn't have touched what you were looking for.
And then it was discussed, well, it expanded it to the whole union.
Yes.
But the proposals were for non-union positions.
Okay, that's right.
Thank you.
That's right.
Because once you get the unit, it complicates though. I mean, it can be done, but it's a complicated process. It, it's not, it makes it more complex, essentially. And the cost would obviously be much greater. So we started off with the non-union first.
In lieu of that, we, my apologies. And in lieu of that, we were now looking at this body who really isn't, at least most of us, trying to do something like this. Trying to look at some parameters or at least address the eight positions. So it sounds like that's something that can be done. I would propose that I share this with at least the two of you and with a little short email of what my concerns were and see what you wish to do with it because it sounds like any action in terms of creating another meeting is going to involve inviting a, a rep from the union, which I agree should occur, but it, it has to be initiated by the administrator so we don't get into the middle of a policy board versus administrative action.
Yeah, it's, it's a, and the good news is, we're in great relationship with our unions. As you said, we have had no grievance, no arbitration. Well, we won arbitration cases, pretty minor, and we were successful. But we've had no lawsuits, no grievances, nothing. And we're in very good terms. In fact, we were able to get five three-year contracts in the span of just a few negotiations. That speaks well. And the union, we're in good shape, fair fact. When there are issues, we're fortunate that our union representatives are very good people, respect, these are the professionals, though, that they, a lot of times, call us with an issue before it gets to a grievance. Ninety-five percent of the time, we're able to resolve it. So that's good. But you've got to be careful because at any time, any employee can file an unfair labor trade. So we have to be careful. We cannot talk to individual employees about union-related issues without going through the union committee.
So in summary, I will send the two of you the information and also a short note about what it, what my understanding is of the inequity created.
Do you want to share that with everyone?
No, I don't. I want to send it, share it with the administrators.
And then we can FOIA it? You'll make us FOIA that information?
No, I think they're going to-
Why not share it with everyone? If this is a concern that's going to come to-
Do you want names and everything going out to everybody?
If that's what you're doing, we have one commissioner pushing this, and we have no idea what you're talking about. And yet you keep throwing it out there.
All right.
Well, I can tell you in the past, at least my practice has been, if one commissioner asks for information, I should involve seven.
That's what I figured you would do.
To avoid that perception where certain commissioner gave information and not other commissioners.
And that's what I thought. Instead of it coming from me, it would come from the administrators.
I just think it's fair.
That's what we've done in the past on all of it.
Well, yeah, a lot of times with the, if a commissioner sends them to me, I pass on to all seven commissioners. So yeah, if you want to do that, that's, well, whatever he says-
It stays with our-
I would recommend, and it's up to Deb, if that, if that, continue that in practice of whatever information one commissioner gets, is shared to all seven. And we all know it can cause internal problem, and minor issues can become big issues with the perception as among commissioners that certain people have information on this, you know, especially when you have four brand-new commissioners coming out. I think we've seen a good start and get Deb off to a good start that all seven have the same information.
And that's, that's the way we have done it, and that's the way I've done everything that I've wanted shared with the board. I've never shared directly to the board.
Yeah, we have to be careful too that we don't get such, where there's round and round discussions going around among commissioners because that can cause open issues.
Okay.
So you want to set another meeting or, I guess, we're going to talk about senior services on December 6th.
That's the only unresolved thing going into the 2023 budget.
Yes. The other one is a much bigger, more complex and more challenging issue. It's not going to be solved by December 6th.
Would that have to come back to the board then for consideration to be continued and just processed?
Yeah, I think our task from our chairman was to make a recommendation on the senior service position. Correct?
And, and to look at the other issues.
Yeah, that's more of a long-term.
Yeah, that was both tasks from the chair.
Is that an accurate sequence?
The immediate, the immediate need was to resolve this issue. And I would hope that we have a recommendation to the, to the board, and then the board's going to have to make a decision. I'm uncomfortable with, can I speak?
Yes.
I'm uncomfortable with, there's a, there's a line between management and board, and I, I think we're getting a little bit sloppy on that. I don't want the board to be micromanaging the human resources, the administrative positions, or the negotiations of the union. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit cautious about that, if that's what the need is.
We do have formerly, a union committee was composed of, at now, the chairman and vice chairman. Every year, we set, when we do the appointments in January, but traditionally, it's always been the chairman and vice chairman, with the exception, one year, when Tony Anzor was on it, he goes, the chairman and now would do it.
Right.
So it was Melinda and Tony. You've had so many times, it was a non-chairman. But those are the official ones that are authorized to talk to the union.
So we'll proceed with that plan. And I, I hear what, what our chair is saying, but I also know how concerned he is about employee feelings on different issues and making sure that anything is highlighted that is bothering, it's so that it can be adjust, addressed appropriately by the appropriate parties.
Very good. Have you done?
I've done.
Good. All right.